Which I don't know why I'm doing that.
It's now six thirty-two, we're getting a little bit late start, but I'd like to call this work session, this work session of November the thirteenth to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Cosner.
Here.
Councilman Nestor.
Present.
Councilperson Thomas. Councilman Chikowski.
Here.
Mayor Moeller.
Present.
Mayor, we note four present, one absent, and no dequant.
Thank you. This time I'd like to invite Pastor Jim to come to face him first. Praise the Lord. Heavenly Father, we give you all the thanks and the praise that there's an invitation for prayer to come into this council meeting, and there's a recognition of your holy presence. We thank you for all the wisdom, the presence, unity, knowledge, and counsel. We thank you for what you're doing here in the city of Monessen, and your presence, your blessing, upon the people in attendance, that there be unity and joy and graciousness, there'll be a genuine sense of cooperation and participation within the growth of the city. We thank you, we give you all the praise, in Jesus' name, amen.
All right, pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Let's see, uh, there's been some minutes circulated earlier for October twenty-third. Uh, people had a chance to review those, and we want to approve those.
Mayor, motion to approve, motion to approve minutes of a previous session of October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a second?
I do have questions.
Well, we have to have a second before we can...
Okay, second.
Okay, any questions?
Moving forward with minutes, I know I'm beating a dead horse, but minutes are permanent, historical.
Nobody's arguing.
And I would at least like for them to have no, no typos, no misspelled names, and at least Monessen has to be Monessen and not Vanessa or everything else. We, and I know we can't afford it, uh, you know, whatever it takes, but we have to figure out a way that these minutes at least look presentable when they're put online for people to look at, and how, how does that happen?
Well, it requires editing by people.
Yes.
Um, historically, that's the city clerk position.
Okay.
But the city clerk is occupied with other duties at this time.
I get that. That's why I volunteer...
That's why I circulate it to you, to Mike.
Yeah.
To, to do it, and you're free to make all the changes, corrections that you can.
And I did that, but when I got them back, the corrections I made were still, they were still the original mistakes that were made, and they were not corrected. And I spent a lot of time doing it, which I have no problem doing it, and I will do it every time, but when I take the time to make corrections, and I come back and I see the same misspelled words with aggravation.
Well...
So, how do we prevent that?
That's a good question. I'll make sure that...
But was the new copy, a lot of those were corrected in the new copy, similar to yours. Can we look at that and compare?
Absolutely.
So, I, I would suggest that we, we, we table this motion. I'd like to make a motion to table this, and let's, uh, let's review the, the minutes again, and see if we can come up with something that looks a little bit more comfortable.
Second.
All, well, call the roll, please.
Okay, what do we, what do we...
We're tabling, tabling.
Okay.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Ochikowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moeller.
Yes. This time I'd like to, uh, open the, uh, the forum for public comments related to agenda items only.
Ernest Alagrapis. I'll welcome former councilman. Anyway, on page two, where are the money's coming? We have five thousand dollars going to maintenance for the Monessen volunteer. Then in G, the city streets need truck issues. Were you able to do both of them?
Well, so we're going to discuss.
And the, the other one, you're going to be clear about it, you're going to pick one?
I hope so.
If you, if you do both, then how are you going to accomplish that?
The second one is only for, to look for grant opportunities. You're not spending any puny, any money on the second one, so that's not an issue.
Well, it says related issues to the street department.
But it's still no money being spent there, and we're not, we're not voting on any of these things tonight. This is just discussion items.
Yeah, but you could still vote, you have to...
We're not going to vote on anything that's here. The only thing we're going to vote on is, just like any other work session, is bills are being paid.
All right, then, um, on page three K. What is submission? When is the deadline for submission? I don't understand. You have to develop document for submission.
We have to have a budget by the end of the year. What's the day, due date on that? End of December, or last?
The...
It's an ordinance has to be passed.
Proposed budget needs to be submitted to the public by the end of this month.
This month, in November?
Yeah.
So that means, uh, Monday, coming Monday, we're going to have the meeting here?
Twenty-fourth.
Yep.
I think you'll be able to hear me.
Well, use this, because, uh, go to YouTube and Facebook and all that kind of thing.
Okay, um, two things here. E, discussion of the allocation of five thousand maintenance funds for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to the Monessen Volunteer Fire Department Relief Association. That's one of the companies. What about the other one, Hilltop?
Don, if a budget, if there, there's a line item for five thousand for each.
Okay, well, I just said the one, I just wanted to make sure.
I didn't catch that, I apologize, but there's five thousand that's allocated no matter what.
I won't beat you up.
You can, but it's...
Right now, no, I can't. Um, so, uh, any idea on the timeline on that, Tony?
That could be this week.
This week.
I mean, that, this week or next week, all I'll do is...
Yeah, and the only reason I'm inquiring about it, and I, I talked to the mayor, and I talked to, uh, Mike, was that both of the fire departments have loans that are payable the first of the year.
Okay.
And, you know, I know our payment is thirty-two thousand dollars. And, uh, that really will go a long way.
It goes a long way, yeah. I mean, it's allocated every year for what the amount of...
Okay, just making sure that, on a timeline, and I see that...
No, that's guaranteed. Matter of fact, the only question I would have to you guys, which has never been brought up, to my knowledge, and you're on council, I don't remember it ever being us when we were all there, would they prefer the money in the beginning, middle, or the end? Because it really doesn't matter.
I pr- Hilltop, I would prefer it towards the end.
Okay.
And, uh, the reason is that that's when the payment is due, the first of the year, and...
No, that's no problem at all.
Okay, and, uh, F I C, we're discussing the current status of L S A grants, and I'm sure Mike will bring us up to date on that.
He does.
Okay?
Thank you, Don.
Thank you. Good to see you. See you guys all then.
Yeah, good to see you again.
Trying to stay warm.
Not too bad.
Still here.
That's a good... As long as we see each other, we're good.
That's true.
Anybody else with the gin items? Okay, well, let's continue on then. Uh, mayor's discussion items, comments made by Ron Loeser. I've got a few, because it's been a busy week or two. I've kept the solicitor jumping. First off, I had a very opinionated visitor today who was very upset that we installed a stop, stop sign on Lower Ninth Street, and did not install a sign with a flashing red light prior to the stop sign, or, or any sort of warning, a new traffic pattern. He was especially upset because the traffic study hadn't been performed before we put the stop sign there, and that there was no way for people to be made aware that, that, uh, that the stop sign was there. Um, we did do an ordinance, it has been in the newspaper, but he also went on to complain about the crosswalk that we have in the middle of Third Street, between Schoonmaker and Donner. Um, he's very concerned that people don't take a walk up to the existing crosswalk at Schoonmaker to cross the street there, and we made it easier for people to cross in the middle of a block. There is a, a crosswalk there. He's concerned that it may lead to the traffic jams on Donner, which I don't know, but the bottom line is, uh, we did enact an ordinance by council, we duly advertised it in the paper, and council has a reasonable expectation that people pay attention to traffic signals, new or not. To that end, uh, I don't know that we need to do anything other than keep an eye on the situation of the stop signs and the, and the crosswalk, and make sure it doesn't present more of a problem. If it does, we can always consider changing that. It is just one person's opinion. Just as a reminder, um, well, back to other issues. W E C, I wish he was here to talk to, to talk about this, uh, coordinated a contractor, and I believe it was M C S P, who crawled down the pipe with a, with a coworker walking along the side of it as they crossed the railroad tracks and into cliffs, and they identified, they, they come to a big, big vault in the middle of the, the, uh, pipe, which, I got pictures of it. That's looking up from the bottom of the pipe and looking up the top to what appears to be a concrete lid on the top of this vault. So, Cliffs being, um, a private business, they, and very dangerous place to be working, they have certain requirements for anybody that breaks ground there, and they have a contractor that was used to, to... that was authorized to, to, to do this. So they, they identified the spot, they dug down, and what they found, they got four inches down underneath the pavement, and they hit a concrete lid. This concrete lid is not the lid to the vault, but rather the lid to an electrical box that has potentially twenty-three thousand volts in it. The point being is, either the guy was mis, misread the locator and, and located the, this tw- box as, as opposed to the locator that was in the guy in the, the, the pipe, or they put this box on top of the lid, which is entirely possible, too. But Cliffs took the opinion that they're not going to go doing, looking for a needle in a haystack. They want better, better identification of the spot. So they directed us to get a hold of a particular contractor which has good records of, historical records that go back way ti- way back of where this, this pipe runs, with, uh, vast instrumentation that they can find where this pipe is, and, and they want to see if they can locate it. The, um, this should happen next week. Now, the only concern that we have is that this happened in a timely fashion because, and I wish our engineer was here to explain this better, but we have people that are working on the pipe over there right now coming down for printing, and as soon as they finish that up, they need more work to do, or they're going to go elsewhere. And if they go elsewhere, the mobility cost to bring them back into town is going to be quite high. So we need to keep on this with, with, uh, due diligence to make sure that we, we follow through with, with identifying if this is really a thing or not. So, while this is going on, all the way on their side of town is State and Grand Boulevard. And on the intersection of State and Grand is a covert that runs underneath State Road as it, right there at that intersection. It was found by our engineer and by, by our streets department that there is a lot of erosion going on right there, to the point that there is concern that that can fail imminently soon. So, the, the solicitor has worked up a, a entry permit. We, uh, got a thing going. We're going to do a survey there and start working towards getting this corrected. But what, but all this is really predicated on problems on Spring Drive, which is just above this. So, you get involved with a little bit of these projects, and they seem to grow, and it gets to be a little bit scary. But up on Spring Drive, you have two roads coming down Spring. You have, uh, uh, let's see, what are the, the roads? One of them is Crescent, and the other is Lee Drive. Both of those are on the side of a hill, and water, when we have the heavy rains, they come down in barrel and bucket loads. The point being is that water really doesn't have any place to go. And the, the, the only thing that's there, the water needs to be ducted to storm drains that deliver that water to that covert that goes underneath State Road. So, W E C engineering is in the process of looking at how he can capture that water, what the cost will be, and we'll have to evaluate that, cost versus benefit, and consider our line usage fee for, for paying for that. But that's something that's, that's on the radar, and will be developed probably by the time we get to the next meeting. That'll be more information about that that we can talk about, that, that's going on there. So, everybody's aware that the government was shut down for a period of time, and it just got active last night, both the state and the, the federal government. The point being is, here a couple of weeks ago, council approved requisition number thirty-six for payment. The problem was that we couldn't get USDA to authorize P N C Bank to make that payment. Well, the P, bear in mind that the contract that we have going on with all these contractors is not with the USDA, it's with the city. The city's using the USDA as a finance organization, but the contract that we had for requisition thirty-six is a contract between the contractor and the city. So, with the help of the solicitor, we actually authorized the P N C Bank to go ahead and issue us the, the payment for that requisition thirty-six, and we did make that, that payment. Um, late last night, we get the email, there's a thirty-seven going on. We've known about thirty-seven for, for a few days, but I wasn't willing to go another seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, you, you only write checks for as much as you can write checks for, and that was just more than we, we had the ability to write checks for, even an airline usage fee, which has lots of money. So I basically withheld that until which time is we can get a hold of the USDA and process, process that appropriately, make sure that they handle the one that we did last week properly, and that they're prepared to take on this one. I just want to make sure that our finances are in order before we go further with that project. So those are the things that kept me quite busy over the, the week.
And they've contacted the city today, USDA, right?
I didn't have that contact. I was going to contact them tomorrow, but I understand they did call somebody.
I think they sent an email to Mike today.
Yeah.
So they're back up and...
They're back open, and I think that they're happy with what we did, or are they not?
I, they, they didn't voice any opposition.
We need to make sure they're happy. I get a little flancy. Okay. Thank you. Um, the next thing on the list is discussion of the, the garbage fee rates. And I think that, uh, the treasury put together something that they want to propose. I have a little bit of exception with what they proposed, in that they proposed a single, single thing, the way that it historically been done, with a single yearly payment, a discount period, and a penalty if you don't pay it within a certain time. The problem with that is, we're talking two hundred and thirty-six dollars if you have the money right now, today, before January the thirty-first, to make payment. Um, just to clarify one thing, too, because there's a little bit of misunderstanding around council. Treasury Department has timed things to be as easy as possible with the public, that we have the garbage fee that typically gets, gets mailed out before the end of the year. Everybody says it's early every year, but it's not. We're getting later and later. But it's sent out early enough in the year that it doesn't affect Christmas as much as it possibly could. And waiting this late, it's going to affect Christmas in a big way. Because if you delay it till after the first year, you run into problems with the city taxes. You have the city taxes that come out, and then you have the school taxes that come out, the county taxes, and all these taxing bodies are scheduled, the, the city and the schoo- the county go together, but the point being is they're scheduled to occur equally across the year such that people can afford the payments. So here we have the garbage payment. I would like to suggest that we do, we offer quarterly payments. The monthly payments was a real disaster, but quarterly payments, I think, are important. Um, and I promised I was going to bring my calculator down, and I didn't.
On the phone?
Yeah, it, that's not the same. Um...
So how many people, how many people do we have that are on the rolls for garbage?
Only the Treasury Department can tell you that, the number that are actually on the rolls. Now, there's many, every res- every property is on, will receive a garbage bill. There is a lot of properties, even today, that are vacant or abandoned or whatever, that will never pay the garbage bill.
I think it's every property that has a roof on it, right?
Pretty much. The, the bottom line is that, that we came up with numbers that were basically what was reasonable to expect payment, and that's what set these, these rates here.
Do you want to say that again?
I will try. The, the two hundred and forty-six dollars face value was based upon the number of, of residents that can be ex- that, that we can bill and expect payment from.
Okay. So, so the simple math, in my mind, unfortunately, would be, take the number of people that we can actually know that pay, divide that into what the garbage bill is, and there's your nu- there's your number.
And that's what this number is.
So you're saying there's only two hundred and, there's only two thousand nine hundred and five people in the city of Monessen that pay garbage?
Residents that pay the garbage.
That's it?
That's it.
There's more than two thousand nine hundred and ten residents in the city?
But most of them are households or so forth. There's thirty-one hundred, there's only thirty-one hundred vol- voters, and some of those live with other voters, so it's not an unreasonable number.
Okay.
The, the point being, though, is if we were to offer quarterly payments, I would suggest we set the rate at about sixty-five dollars. That's a six dollar premium.
I think if you want to do quarterly rates, approve what the total bill is going to be. Let your Treasury Department figure out what those quarterly rates are.
Okay, if they will do that. What they provided was this here. That's the Treasury Department generation.
So if council votes to say, hey, we want to give quarterly bills...
Let them figure it out.
They can generate the amount. Because I think last year, your math was a little...
No, the math was wrong on the, the monthly.
Okay.
I'm fine with quarters.
The, 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 the real issue is that we need to get these things going quickly. That although we can't vote during this meeting, I think that we ought to have a strong enough consensus that, that the Treasury Department can go out and get these things printed and, and going such that by the next meeting, they can be mailed.
Right in time for Thanksgiving.
Excuse me?
Right in front of Thanksgiving.
Right in front of Thanksgiving. That's not a good thing, I understand.
I think I'll tell the thirty-first of January, so...
Right.
All right.
So, if, if we agree to their math, that face value is two hundred and forty-six dollars. Um, oh, the other thing that they, they issued that was a, a real problem is a lot of people, with no penalty on it, people would wait, if you don't make the payment for the early discount, that they just wait till the end of the year to pay it, because there's no penalty. There's nothing that says you pay it on a certain date. So what they proposed was that they install a one and a half percent, percent per month penalty to encourage people to pay at the beginning of the year, as opposed to wait until the end of the year to make their payment.
So, do you know what the budgeted amount is of garbage bill for next year?
Um, yes, that's in the, in the packet. They, they included in the contract.
Should be eight hun- it should be eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Something like that. I, it's in the co- it's in the packet.
It's six hundred eighty-six thousand, sorry.
It's in the packet. Yeah, and that sounds about right. I, I won't argue that. Somewhere. Now, here it is. Well, this doesn't have their split on it.
Doesn't say it.
Yeah, it's not real clear.
No, because even the, even the fees differ on this.
Yeah, this doesn't tell you.
Yeah, this, this just doesn't not tell you those numbers. Unfortunately, they, the Refuge Authority goes out and does a contract for three years. Then they take that and they divvy it up accordingly between, uh, Lower Belvernan and, and Monessen. Uh, Lower Belvernan pays part of it, and then upper, then Monessen pays part of it. And then they add a little thing to it so that they can do their mailing to everybody and run their, their business, or pay their clerk and solicitor and so forth. So there is a little bit of an adder to it besides just a straight number.
Well, there has to be a straight number.
There is. I just don't have it. I, I apologize. That was mailed to me.
It's six hundred eighty-six thousand.
I, I believe that to be correct, yeah.
I know, I know that's it, because that's what's in the budget.
Okay, perfect.
That's correct, councilman. Six hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-three cents.
There you go. You got it.
Thank you.
So I guess the, the question is, we need to go back to the Treasury Department and ask them to prepare numbers that they're comfortable with for quarterly payments in addition to the annual payments that, that they outlined to us. And based upon that...
So if you do quarterly payments, how do you expect to add a one point five percent penalty?
Exactly. You, they have to figure this out and make this work right. If they miss a quarterly payment, the, you make it, do the rest of it final? I don't know. They need to take that into account.
But council decides that, not the Treasury Department. They're going to come back and say, that's what we're here for, the gov- governing body.
Okay, then let's, let's, let's have the, the quarterly rate at, at sixty-five dollars a quarter, and that if they fail to make a payment, the balance becomes due imme- due immediately and will be penalized at the rate that we have for annual payments.
I, I don't know off the top of my head, just looking at this.
Otherwise, we do it the way it's just been...
If you're not making quarterly payments, you're certainly not going to worry about these answers. You're not going to care about that.
Suggestions?
Can you push the timetable back to come up with something more formal, and it's not even two weeks, it's about ten days? I, I'm assuming... What does council want to do?
I know what I think, but I'm just one.
And that is again?
Quarterly payments at sixty-five dollars a quarter. If they miss a quarter, then the balance will be, the balance will be due.
You lose your, you lose your right to pay.
You lose your quarter- you lose your quarterly rate, and the balance will be due in full.
You said sixty-five dollars?
Mm-hmm. That's a six dollar premium over paying for it per month, or per quarter. That covers the cost of them having to generate a new bill to work with their system. There, there is some overhead with the city.
There's not that much.
There is pretty much, yeah. I wouldn't...
Are we still using Bird Fiber for garbage collection?
For garbage collection, but we have a very antiquated software package that's used for the billing. And, uh, I've asked our city clerk to see if she could move that to QuickBooks, and the answer was no.
So, so if you're doing what you want to do by quarterly payments, and you're saying two hundred and sixty dollars a, a quarter, no, I mean, I'm sorry.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five dollars a quarter.
It's a six dollar per mo- per quarter premium, three dollars per month.
So, what are you giving as a discount and incentive which people would want to say, well, I'll pay it all the first day?
Then they are going to pay the entire bill the first day, and they're going to get a, the discount that was in the, in what the letter they sent us.
The, the, so you're talking a twenty dollar discount?
No, if, if, if they want to pay it all, they're going to save, they're going to be paying two hundred and thirty-six dollars. They save ten dollars over face value, which is approximately two percent.
So, if they, if they pay a discount, they get two, it's two thirty-six. If they pay face, it's two sixty?
Two forty-six.
Two forty-six. But you said sixty-five dollars a quarter.
If they agree on the very... If they agree on the very first payment by two twenty-eight, when, when the payments are due, to pay quarterly, they'd pay sixty-five dollars instead of the two hundred and forty-six dollars. That's sixty.
What about somebody that comes down the day after the bills go out and wants to pay the whole thing?
Then they get it at two thirty-six. Early payment.
Okay.
Well, let's talk it through until you're not.
Okay. Great.
You comfortable with that? If you take two forty-six and divide it by four, you come up with fifty-nine dollars. But for quarterly, I think that we ought to make, we ought to put an adder on it of about six bucks. And that takes into account the fact that they have to print new bills, they have to go through and, and monitor that and keep track of it. It's, it's, it's a laborsome thing. One in which they're not happy doing, but they can do it.
Well, what's their exact bill then?
Their exact bill is two hundred and forty-six dollars.
No, 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 no. If you're saying that you want to do two, and I'm looking at this for every penny we spend of taxpayer money. We're going to take two thirty-six or two forty-six, okay? And you want to change the two forty-six to what? To?
Sixty-five dollars if they pay quarterly.
Because of what the refuse authority's costs?
The refuse authority cost, we, we had that, was the six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. You're paying that bill regardless.
Paying six eighty-six regardless. But what I'm saying is, if you're worried about a, a couple more dollars to add on because.
Time and material for the city.
Right. That costs the city money to, to, to do it. You can't do it at fifty-nine dollars and make out well. And that's the problem we had with twenty dollars with the twelve payments. That did not work.
But you're saying like the, the refuge authority has costs?
The city does. They have to generate a new bill.
Yeah, it's not the.
We generate the bill and we mail it out anyways.
Right, right. We pay a fixed amount every month regardless of anything else.
Right. I know that. We pay fifty-five thousand dollars every now and then.
Right.
But what I'm saying is, you said about there's administrative costs and all this other stuff for.
For ours, our treasury department, no, for our treasury department, not for the refuge authority, for our treasury department. Our treasury department has an antiquated software package that only works on annual payments. When they do quarterly or, or monthly payments, anything other than annual payments, they have a lot of manual interaction that goes in there. It takes, they have to generate a new bill every time. They have to req- requeue up what was being paid. It becomes a real nightmare.
Yeah, but I look at that, and I understand that, but I look at that and say, shame on us, not shame on the taxpayer.
Well, maybe, but we've tried to change that software package and we're unable to.
Why can't we?
Because of all the interaction it has with Burckheimer and the, the state.
Change it.
We tried, we tried and, and Linda couldn't find a way to get that into QuickBooks.
Unless you can show an actual cost of it's going to be this and this like administrative and all this stuff, we need to show that.
And I think we can, we can.
I don't think we can. You're just telling me you have an antiquated system right now. What makes you think you're going to be able to show costs that are, oh, what, what's the cost to print? I know we get, I get the, I get the PO that's saying it's going to cost so much to print the bills.
They gotta, they gotta go in, back into the system, print it all out. It takes time, it takes some money.
That's administrative. You do not.
Is this cost to the city?
No. People that are, the treasury department has so many hours in a day and they get paid so much.
And it's not the, to.
They're not doing overtime to do it, so there's a fixed cost there that's part of their hourly wage.
Right.
Just like any of us when we're where we work. You don't tack on an additional cost because you think you need to. What's wrong?
No, I think you're missing the whole point. That it does, there's, you add more work to them, they have to do more things and they do end up with overtime. They have trouble maintaining the hours that we, we're asking them. They, they do all kinds of problems.
Okay. I don't agree with you anywhere close to that, but that doesn't matter. That makes no sense to me. I'd like to see.
Yeah, I would.
Specific administrative costs to break it down and say, this is why we charge you three dollars more than what everybody else is or we dump. Because this is where it's going to and this is where our costs are at. We should be able to generate that if somebody wanted that.
Well, Jerry's not here to, to tell us exactly what it costs the treasury department to generate these bills and to process those bills.
Ask him tomorrow.
I will.
We can have email.
Okay.
I think if we're going to sit there and be responsible for every penny we spend, we need to allocate and, and say this is what we're spending the money on.
And I'm not disagreeing with that at all, but I think that to do things and say we're not going to charge for it is, is ludicrous too.
There's a lot of things that we don't charge for that is part of the ambiance of city hall doing business for the government.
Well.
We don't charge. We're not a, we're not for a, we're a, not a for-profit organization.
We're not. We have to li- work on so much tax revenue that we get and that's what we do. We're very cautious in the way we spend that money.
I have a question.
Okay.
Quarterly, should, shouldn't it be based off the face value and not the discount rate?
It is, it is.
Okay.
That's what I, my numbers were based off the, the, the face value.
Okay, just.
And I will, I will verify that with treasury department and see if those are realistic numbers for, for quarterly payments. I have no issue with that. I do think that it's important that we offer quarterly in addition to what they proposed for annual payments.
Okay.
And people can budget for that.
You hope.
You hope.
I hope that they would.
It's tough for a lot of people though. There's no doubt about that. We, we tax them to death. Okay, so I will do that. I will contact treasury department. I'll get them to put together something in response to that, their suggestion for a quarterly payment. And, uh. I would like to think that they can go ahead and order cards once the council gets that, those numbers and we all acknowledge it. Put a requisition in anyway. Okay, let's move on. CDBG paving, um, we've got to hold another public hearing. So just to recap what's going on here, we've been in discussion with Aaron and, and, uh, Charlie Fees. Quite a bit talking about how we do this, this twenty twenty-five budget that we approved. And there's, there's two issues that came about. First off, when we did our public hearing the last time. We showed the amount left after you withdraw, you pull out the administration fees. Charlie Fees says that's not appropriate. You have to show the total amount, show how much the administration fees are, show how much the road is and so forth and so on. So he requires us to go back and do another public hearing on twenty-five budget. The twenty-five budget was also taken on into account the eight oh five four QTC, qualified, the qualified census seller. That includes everything east of Third Street, south of, of, uh, Crest Drive. North of Crest Drive, excuse me, from Crest Drive to, to Schoonmaker, from Third Street to, to Tyrol. It's that whole swath. That's a section of town that we've not really spent much, much money in taking care of roads in for many years. And something that CDBG suggested we do. So what we're going to do is the twenty twenty-five budget is we're going to hold a new public hearing and all we're going to put in that is redoing, um, Delaware, is that right?
Delaware, yes.
Delaware. Delaware Rebecca?
I believe it was Delaware.
Okay. So twenty twenty-five will be just doing Delaware. The narrative will include a multi-year project that includes twenty-three funds and twenty-four funds. When we did the Third Street, we had some money left over. When we did Nine Street, we had some money left over. That money left over is enough to do Ro- uh, Roosevelt and a few of the, you know, Pollard and so forth. So those will be the second part of that public hearing that we're going to hold. All of that, when we have the pol- public hearing, that's going to be next week, is that correct? Is that, is there a date scheduled?
It's not scheduled yet. Tomorrow it should be scheduled.
Okay. Pay attention to your newspaper. There will be a public hearing showing up very soon. That will include the money that we're doing for the fire department. It'll include the money we're doing for demolition. It'll include the money that we're doing for these roads. And we've got to do that as a multi-year project for twenty-three and twenty-four and we're going to do it for a standalone project for twenty twenty-five. The twenty twenty-five will require ratification by the following council meeting, which is the reason why we got it on the work session. So that they can make final application at, at DCED now that it's back in business again to get our twenty-five budget processed. If we don't do that, we're, we're at risk of losing twenty twenty-five money, so. They need to do this public hearing and then we need to be prepared to, to, to ratify that in a council meeting. Through a resolution.
First they advertise that doesn't compromise the, the putting it in?
Well, we do it through a requisition.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody understand that? Let's keep on going. Um. We've got a lot of. Boards and authorities that are, there's a lot of appointments to be made. And here we are in November. All I'm saying is if you have people that you think ought to be on a particular board or authority, and I think you've prepared a list of how many of them.
They're in the packet and care and also has a chart, so you can get that.
So in your packet is, is sort of description of which boards and authorities have openings. I'm not saying we do anything today, but I am saying that, that you need to contact those people that you know that you're interested in having on the authority. Get them to submit the proper, proper type of application. And we need to be prepared to make a, make appointments in December. That's just a big heads up.
We got that?
This next one, I received a, a phone call from a very nice lady that lives on McKee. She, uh, she lives in a, McKee doesn't have any off-road parking to speak of. She wants to buy the, the lots next to her to build some on, off-road parking so that you can park a car off the road. One of the pieces of property is one that we cleared through. Local legal action for demolition. In other words, that piece of property still belongs to somebody else. She says that she's got, it arranged where she can buy that piece of property. So she's got that property net directly next to her. And then there's these three properties that I list here that are three more properties. Each property being twenty-two feet wide and a hundred and ten, ten feet long. She wants to, to have a total of, of about eighty feet of places, of road that she can pull in and park off the, the road. That's a lot of, lot of land. I'm not saying that's right or wrong. I'm saying it, we'll get it back on the tax rolls. She will pay taxes on it. What I am saying though is that that puts that property. As parking space. It's not going to be, ever be a home. It's going to be parking space. Or if it's a home, it's because she decided to make it a home. I don't really have a problem with this because it does get it back on the tax rolls, but that's a lot of, a lot of McKee that we're giving to one person. I don't know what council's feeling is towards that, but it's something we need to talk about and be prepared to either.
How big are these partials?
Excuse me?
How big are the partials?
Twenty-two feet wide, not very wide. We're talking about si- three partials, that's sixty-six feet. That's not a lot of, lot, not a real big area. And if you were to build a house there, you would not build it on a twenty-two foot lot. You'd want several pieces of property to build it on. It'd have to go through zoning and so forth. But if nobody has any problem with it, I, that will be a motion on the next one to do.
Is the person currently up on their taxes?
Yes, they are.
They have never been delinquent that way?
No code infractions, no, no delinquencies. They, she insists that she'll pay the taxes on them.
Is it just empty lots right now?
They're just empty lots right now.
Are we cutting the grass?
Bro, they're city of Menneson lots. We're cutting the grass.
Give them, give them away.
There's three less lots. They have to cut grass on.
There we go. Alright, so that'll, that'll be on the agenda.
It's not that big lots anyways.
No, it's not. Okay, good deal. Let's continue on. The next is the allocation of five thousand dollar maintenance funds to the fiscal year twenty twenty-five to the Menneson Fire Department. There's two fire departments. I think you already addressed that before the meeting. Uh, is there anything else that we need to talk about on that?
Just to make sure it's on the agenda. So checks cut.
It's just for both departments too.
Yeah, and we're signing it and then it's done and they can have it the next day.
Okay, we'll take care of that. It'll be on the agenda. Um, LSA grants. It was all up in the air up until yesterday. What do you, what can you tell us about that?
The, the two LSA grants, uh, for both the fire and streets that are still outstanding. I sent an email again to Bryce Rader of DCED today and also left him a message. I'm proposing a meeting, uh, tomorrow when I gain more information with Chief Heppel, uh, with Councilman Gregor. Uh, also with the, the other chiefs who they designate to bring this information to the table and see where we're at with this. My message was, why has this not been approved? Um, if it's related to the budget, that's all well and good, but we need to get this done. So if I can work with our fire folks to have that meeting, that's what I proposed today and we can move ahead with that if that's acceptable. The two police cars that, um, are coming under the special LSA grant program that the chief knows about. Are going to be discussed tomorrow because the budget has passed. And hopefully we're going to get an answer that, that those are allocated out and we can get.
Is it DCED one or is it DCED one?
DCED.
DCED one?
Yeah, and that, they can only do that on Fridays for whatever reason. They're, that's a Friday thing.
So chief, if we could get together tomorrow to contact our person there at DCED and just see where we're at. This was all contingent upon the budget passing. I think they could make some allocations quickly.
Yeah, I'll be here. I think first is.
Really?
Well, one of the stuff is, I think it'll be the eighth or the ninth or.
Yes, with the, yeah. So for Mr. Gregor and, and Chief Heppel, would that be acceptable to have a meeting quickly, uh, no later than Monday? So we can get this guy to say what, what's happening with it. Okay. Okay, let's do, if we, we can do, but we'll have information from him tomorrow and I'll forward that by email. Okay, thank you guys.
So we talked about the police cars. Let's go on. Lurda. This is maybe a new concept to a lot of different people, but it is one of the very few mechanisms that the city has to entice businesses and investment in the city. That the city can actually encourage. There may be other methods of doing this, but to be honest with you, I don't know what they are. I've done a lot of research on this. Lurda stands for.
You skipped one.
But we talked about it.
We didn't talk about the street.
Truck related? Oh, the truck.
You said the also replacement with the upcoming.
Alright, let's go back to that one then. I apologize. Who wants to leave that discussion?
About what?
Truck-related issues within the Streets Department of the City of Menneson, the development of a purchase opportunities within various grant opportunities to assist and replacement of vehicles within the fleet. I don't know that there's much to discuss there, whether we need to do that.
We need a truck. We need a truck. I mean, it's not so much to say, we really need a truck. I just don't know how we're going to get a truck.
Would, would the proposal of putting in two trucks into the LSA statewide grant be something to consider? That's one option. It's just the current need is the problem.
The currently, yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Yes.
Yeah, LSA takes at least a year to see anything happen out of it. That's just, that's just too long.
But by that time though, they might need two trucks too at that time.
Right.
So. Yeah, yeah.
So putting two trucks on the LSA grant may not be a bad idea, but we need to do something more immediately, I think. If there's other grant opportunities, we need to look for them.
Cause I don't think it's probably feasible to patch that floor or, I don't think you can on that truck, right? The floor's falling out, right?
Well.
Well, it won't pass inspection next year.
It won't pass inspection, so.
They said they'd pass it one last time and then it wouldn't pass anymore. That's what they told me.
Yeah.
I just don't feel comfortable putting someone in a vehicle like that, um.
So what truck are we talking about you looking to replace? Are you looking to replace two five, get two five-fifties? Are you talking about the big?
It's the big one, yeah.
My question is this. My question is, is, do we need the big one? Cause I'm going to tell you right now, if you're going to replace that big one, you're talking over two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that is, that unfortunately is never going to happen.
Right. They were talking more five-fifties as suggestions at this point.
What we currently have.
But we have to make the final decision by the thirtieth to submit.
How many trucks do we have, how many five-fifties do we have ready to rock and roll for the, this winter right now, today, Delmar?
There's five, I don't know what conditions they're in. Five total in the truck.
That's, that's really sufficient to get through the winter if they're, they're functioning.
Um, one of them's brand new.
I, I think that's the only thing we should probably have, folks on Friday next week, start inspecting those vehicles and see if they're ready for snow.
Well, they should have already been inspected.
I think they've been doing that, yeah.
Just, I mean, just do preventive maintenance and look through and see what needs done.
Yeah, I think they've been doing that.
They have been, yes.
I stopped by and I met with Rodney this morning, and I asked that question, I said, why didn't you get these trucks ready in the summer? And his answer was, and then it, it made sense to me, he says their inspections are all due now, so he could not get them done in the summer. He said right now they have two trucks that are running, he said three of the trucks need tires. That, that's how this morning when I stopped and I, I, I met with him. And I also, there's a, a truck number one, which is a very old truck, it's taking up space in the garage, he would like it to be gone. The question is, how do you place a, a vehicle out that we own on bid, to try to get somebody to, to, but maybe buy it for parts? How does that happen?
Counselor just decides that they're going to sell the vehicle, is that correct?
Counselor just puts it ad, an advertisement.
We do that soon, like it's the next meeting, so we can.
Last time we just did the paper and someone bought one for two hundred dollars.
Well, but that's only two hundred dollars, maybe we get three somewhere.
So is that something we can do?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
At the next meeting, we'll put it on the agenda, and at least we can maybe sell it and move it all out.
If that's what they, that's what they're.
I mean, is that, would, does anybody else have a, a thought on the process?
Okay.
So what, what do all the trucks need?
Three of them need tires, two of them are ready to rock and roll. Is that the synopsis of it?
That's pretty much what he told me this morning.
Yeah, inspections, I think.
Yeah, inspections, and that would be something else, I think, we need to know, how much do we pay in inspections? Cause it seems like, um, the bigger ones, you pay more, like for the, the street sweeper, which is not a truck, but still it's an expense that we have.
I don't know, we did just in.
Seventeen hundred dollars. Seventeen hundred dollars for the sweeper, to get it inspected, and change the oil, and lube it, and change, uh, some of the filters.
Wow.
I just got the P O today, someone, you put it in, for seven, no, Rodney put it in for seventeen hundred dollars from Hill International. Now, I'm going to ask a stupid question here, and that is.
A street sweeper goes to line uses though, is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, and I guess the only thing is, it must be inspections due on it right now?
I think everything's due ten to twenty-five.
My only issue is, and this isn't putting people at fault, but if we have three trucks, and we have three sets of tires, which is going to cost fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars per vehicle, how do we get them all meeting it at the same time? That makes no sense to me. It does not make sense. My, my question is, is those things, they should not be, we should be staggering when they need to have stuff done to it, so we can do it a lot more efficiently, and make it a lot easier for when it needs to be done. We do this every year, it happens.
Well, that kind of indicates that they're rotating the vehicles around pretty evenly, and they all come due at the same time.
Well, yeah, but I'll tell you what, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, is there, is there a checklist, Delmar? There's supposed to be a checklist, that every day, before you or someone else gets in a truck, it's supposed to be gone over, a safety checklist to make sure everything's fine, just like the police do. They have the same thing, is that being done?
Can I ask a question?
Because you can't do preventive maintenance, that they, when they get into a vehicle, they shouldn't have to worry about anything.
Maybe you can check with, uh, Rodney.
Well.
And see if, if Dustin is doing that, Dustin would be the one that does that, I would think.
Okay, so there should be a log of things that are being done. That's two, three, and I'm going to bring it out, cause it's, it was brought up, and it's an idea that, you know, worried about what works being done wherever and all this, uh, you know, I'm sorry, do the work that our people can do first, before you take it to get it inspected.
That we can do, absolutely.
There's no ifs, ands, or buts, that needs to be done. Not, there's no debate, there's no discussion, it needs to be done.
There's some things that we may not be capable of doing, we don't have O D B two readers to see if they.
But if you don't have, if you're not capable of doing it, then you take it somewhere to get it done. But if you can do some things like the windshield washing nozzle wasn't working, you can't expect a garage to say, yeah, I'll pass inspection for it, you can't put fluid on the windshield, but I'll pass inspection for it, or I, I'll spend the twenty dollars for the part.
Those types of things, I agree with you a hundred percent on.
But that's got to stop.
I, I agree.
Isn't that, we, and there's no reason why, and I'm going to go out on a limb on this, there's no reason why the vehicles can't be getting ready for winter, June, July, August, and come October, November, when you're ready to take it down and get it inspected, guess what? Passes, there's no problem, it's just like your car.
Yep.
Okay, you don't wait, wait for your tires and your lights and all your engine, check engine lights to go on right before you take it to the auto mechanic or the dealer, because they're going to sting you for it. They're going to say, okay, if this was what you need done, here's the bill. This is it. If you don't want to do it, guess what though? You got to fail on a stick. We've got to use some common sense here. Cause we all know at this time of the year, pennies get very difficult to get you keep. And something big comes down the road and bawls something, then there you go. So that still doesn't answer the discussion about what vehicle, what vehicle are you looking to with the L S A grant to replace?
Or augment the fleet we have with right now.
Yes, augmenting the fleet with two, yes.
Okay. So, I'll ask the other question that nobody wants to ask then. If you got two new five-fifties like the one we just got.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have always been told, or I heard, and I don't know if this is true, so I'm not going to say I'm blaming us anybody. But the big, is that international, or the big international can only be used on some streets, and it's whenever it, for big snows and all that.
That's what they're.
Why? I want to know why. Why is it needed to be so special that it needed, the regular trucks can't do those, those places where the big truck can only get to? Because if that's true, and you can only use the big truck to do some plowing, then we'd be doing a disservice to the street crew to get them two five-fifties, and don't try to replace a big truck.
On a major storm, and we don't have them every year, but on a major storm, does that big truck provide any utility on some of the steep hills that the other trucks wouldn't work on? Cause you could do Third Street or Donner or Schoonmaker, Tyrell or whatever. Okay, is there roads that you couldn't go on?
But are the roads, are there roads that you use the five-fifties on that you, I'm sorry, the five-fifties wouldn't work because you needed the big international?
The five-fifties are a weight problem, pushing problem.
Okay.
When you get a blizzard, it's running out of water.
Okay.
That's why it takes to have to do some stuff to get that.
Okay, but my question is, let's assume you get a, the city gets a blizzard, and assuming you have the big international and it's working. There's only one versus five other five-fifties. You can only hit so many roads with the fu, with the big international.
If you have that kind of a snow blizzard, then traffic's pretty much stops.
Okay. Okay.
I think we're looking at one-off problems.
Well, it's a discussion on what, to see where we can get them, so the discussion is, is do you really need a big one? Or if you got two of those five-fifties decked out, does that make a difference? If you're only going to use the big truck in five or ten.
How much longer will that international last?
What's that?
How long will that big truck last, if we?
It's not going to last long, because we didn't approve, we didn't approve to do anything to it.
Then, then in which case, that needs to be what we need to, to do for the worst-case possible thing that happens to the city, we need another big truck.
Well, it has a.
It has a.
It has a Fred Flintstone four, I guess.
So this would be a big truck. And we needed to look for grants and loans and whatever grants to do.
For a fairy godmother for that.
Yeah, exactly. We did, and that was a lost cause. Those, I, I, I looked at those vehicles, and first off, the police cars had two hundred thousand squ, miles on them already, or more. They were very much money, money pits. The big trucks were too big for this roads here, we'd be ripping up every road in town, they just would not work. They were too big. Yeah.
So, does L S A grants only allow you to apply for new equipment?
Yes.
Or can you get used equipment? Because you can cut that, if, I've found on commercial truck trader, a rigs that are that size, that you're ca, capable of driving the big one, with a plow, with a spreader, with everything, for around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah.
That's a lot different than two hundred and forty thousand.
Right.
Okay, but can you apply for something like that?
I think you can, Councilman, yeah.
Now, the other thing is, and I don't want to get into hornet's nest with this one, but I'm going to, and I'm going to say this one too. If we look at something like that for a truck, it's going to have to be what we find is what you got. I'm not going down this road again about, we have an, we have a spreader, but it doesn't fit this, and we've got to have our own plow to set up. This thing's going to come, if it's used, it's going to come with a flipping big plow on it, and its own electronics, um, spreader and everything else.
The, uh, only problem I see with used vehicles is, when you apply for a L S A grant, you have to provide quotes and estimates of what you're buying. And it takes a year before they do it, the chances of a used vehicle still being available a year from now is just not too likely. Whereas a new vehicle gets replaced, and they can do that. Um, that, that, for that reason, I doubt seriously that a used vehicle would ever work in a L S A application.
Well, then I would say I, I think we should strongly look into the option of seeing if we can lease finance a used vehicle like that.
Well, we can do that too. Okay, we want to beat that in the ground anymore? I provided a, a handout for everybody on the Larda project. I would be more than happy to try to answer questions, if you want me to explain it, I will do something to explain it. But a Larda project is what you, you make it to be, and you get the consensus of the school and the county to agree to with your, what your, your premise is. In other words, there's Larda projects that, that might be ten-year abatement, you don't pay zero taxes for ten years, and in ten years, you're paying a hundred percent of the taxes. And I think that happened on Farnum and Files property years ago. I don't know if it was Larda or not, but that's what happened to it. Or you can say, we're going to freeze the taxes at whatever they're at right now, so you have a vacant lot right now, that, uh, you freeze the taxes on, and you're going to go invest and put, spend a half million dollars on building a building there. So you spend your half million dollars, you're still going to be paying, for the first five years, in my concept, the tax on the, on the vacant lot. On year six, you'd pay twenty percent of the full taxes. On year four, it'd be forty percent and so forth, up to year ten, when you're paying a hundred percent of the taxes. That's what I think would be appropriate.
Well, my only question when I read this real fast was, that sounds great, but what if in years, well, that's one through five where there's zero, right?
Right.
Okay, what happens after year one through five? They sell the property.
Well, we can write the ordinance any way we want it to be, we can make it go with this new buyer, and they, they're going to have to start paying taxes in year six?
Well, but the new buyer's going to say, wait a minute, I didn't ask for any money to, to, uh.
That, that's fine, but they.
Do my.
We can write the ordinance any way we want to write it, we can make that so that it carries over to buyer, or we can make it restart, or we can make it eliminated.
But don't you think that would be a detriment to the, or a new buyer saying, you're going to, you're going to stime, stime me with a tax that I shouldn't have? No, they would, if it was year one through five, it wouldn't be, yeah. All right, but say, I, I have that, and I, I go into this program, and I want fifty thousand, and I qualify, like you said.
Mm-hmm.
One, two, three, four, and five, I paid zero taxes on that, because that's what an investment I did, correct?
Right.
Okay. Year six, I sell it.
Then they're going to pay twenty percent of the tax, full value of tax.
Who is?
Whoever buys it.
Whoever owns the property.
They don't want to buy, they don't want to pay for that.
They don't have a choice, that's what it is, that's what taxes are, that's what the agreement is.
But they're paying for something that they did nothing to.
Oh, but the property's been increased in value, it is now a much more valuable piece of property, that's the whole point of this Larda.
So it gets reset, reassessed?
It, yeah, it, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, if you're building a, a building, it'll get reassessed.
Okay, what if it's just something you did at home?
As an example, as, as, same, same thing. As an example, we have a guy that's just a couple buildings down from here, that is a taxi derby business. He worked to deal with the redevelopment authority to buy the property that's sitting on the other side of, of, over there by, by Anche's. The, the.
The, the, the mortuary.
Exactly. So, this would be a perfect opportunity for him to go over there, get that land, and build his dream building that he wants to do, and he's not going to pay tax on it for the first five years. On year six, he's going to be paying twenty percent of the full value, year four, forty percent and so forth.
But if the property, you're saying though, the property will have increased in value twenty percent because that's.
No, 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 the day he, he, he gets a building permit, it's reassessed. It's reassessed at five hundred thousand dollars, but he's abating, he's not paying that tax on that five hundred thousand dollars until year six. On year six, he pays twenty percent of that value, reassessed at forty percent and so forth, but it's reassessed as soon as you do the building permit.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, what if he, because the seller.
It carries to the next, so, if it, he sells in year two, that new property owner has the same obligations, it'll be, under this scenario, forty percent, paying the taxes.
Okay. I just, I want to make people really get strapped with that.
It's, well, I think that this is.
It's not, it's not a detriment.
It's, it's always a positive to this, that's the good thing about this whole concept, is we're not costing the city a single penny, but we're making it advantageous for people to come into Menneson and invest in Menneson. And that's what the whole concept.
Actually, I, I would say if you sell the property, that indicates the agreement, and you should be paying taxes in full.
Well, you, we can write that way, but.
I mean, it's the same, it's the same theory that what happened with the state, a newsstand, when Sony came in and Volkswagen came in, they got hundreds of millions of dollars in loans, soon as they're zero percent, and ready to start paying back what it was, boom, they shut everything down and closed it, and they got nothing.
That's right.
So, is this something of the same way?
Uh, it, it, it could be, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to answer.
I don't, I don't think you have the property to, to build a place like that, but there's a single-family lots all over town, somebody might but build a house, and the same standards apply.
Look what happened to Farnum and File, Farnum and File had, was part of a brownfield process, and they ended up building, renovating huge warehouses. There's two hundred and eighteen thousand square feet of warehouse space out there. Only reason why I'm in Menneson is because of that project. But that was a ten-year thing, that expired here a couple of years ago, and now we're, we're taxing the bu, when it expired, he sold it all. He sold it all to a company, M R I P. They now own all that property. Boom, the taxes were, abatement was over with, they got taxed for twenty million dollars, they are the largest taxpayer in the City of Menneson right now, by far. They own all that property. That's the way, the, the Larda project, that's the way it worked with that project, and I would expect that same process to work with our Larda project.
Okay, uh, I'm just saying.
If you in, improve the value of a piece of property, that improvement goes with the sale, and whoever buys that piece of property with that. And whoever buys that piece of property with that improvement is gonna be paying the taxes on that at the appropriate time.
So the, the tax bills are actually impacted at the county assessment level. It's not just in the city, we're keeping track and saying, hey, you owe a thousand dollars this year, but we're only charging you four hundred. The taxes, it'll be on the county records.
And that, and you gotta have their buy-in to, to, to do this process. We're only one taxing body. You have to have the school and the county body in as well. So whatever, and that's all I'm really asking. We need to think about this, and I'm not asking for any decisions now, or even two weeks from now, or anything else. This is a process that'll take most of next year to accomplish, if we're gonna work on it. But we need to start thinking about this, seeing how it would fit. We need to start thinking about what an ordinance would be, and we need to take that to DCD, to the school system, to the county, and get them to, to agree to it. Is that correct?
I don't know if DCD has to approve it, but I believe the school district and county do, but you do have that.
I think the stamp program is one, one that would primarily interest in it.
Well. It, it might be part of your stamp program, so you might wanna take that into consideration before you roll it out. There might, they might have another suggestion for a, a, a different program.
Well, they were quite in line with this.
So this is where you got the idea from?
No, I got this idea from the county, to be honest.
Okay. So, it sounds like it's gonna be consistent with the stamp program, but.
So this is in the very infancy of it, of us talking about that?
It's very much in the infancy. I don't wanna delay this on you, six months from now, and say, hey guys, we're out of time, we gotta approve this.
And Councilman, you do, that, there are risks, there's risk to everything, but those bigger projects, there's not really the space in the city for that, right? There's not vacant property, um.
No, but fifty thousand here, fifty thousand here, fifty thousand here, it starts adding up.
Yeah, and I'm looking for not fifty thousand, but half million here and a half million there.
It could also apply to homes.
And we, okay.
You can't build a new home for less than half million anymore.
It's not just your big commercial property.
This, I want this to be citywide, to affect businesses and residents as, as well. That if you have, somebody wants to come in and build a new home in Menesha, let's encourage them to build a new home in Menesha. Let's defer their taxes for five years.
Okay.
Okay. Beat it to death, I think we did. Um, are we Jay now?
Hi.
Hi. What's hi? Oh, Supernova. Have we got anything from Supernova yet?
We should have it tomorrow for Joe's review, and we'll have it ready for passage to the members, and then passage at our twenty-fourth meeting.
Okay.
But we don't have anything today.
Well, there you be.
I mean, they did send over a, an overview.
Yeah, they're, yes. But we wanted a little more of a shell of a contract.
I would, I would assume they have some kind of.
Some boilerplate agreement, so.
They came in and made a presentation to us. They, they.
He said they had a, a contract here.
They said they had a contract, and we just need to get that contract. I seen very little cost to the city and huge rewards.
Well, there was a c- contract fee that I saw in here, um.
But he indicated, uh, it's associated that they get paid out of that, from the federal funds that they have, so, they, they charge a contract fee and are paid that way. It's not us.
Okay.
But we need to clarify that, and definitely make sure.
That's the reason why we need a contract.
Yes. I agree.
Yeah, 'cause it said a hundred and fifty dollars per week for half-day services, three hundred for full day.
Yep, and I think that's built to the program, and all we provide is the, uh, the facility and the lunchroom kinda thing, and.
Hopefully, we get that before next time, and we can actually start moving on it.
Yeah, we have to, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next one is a discussion about our police department. Um, first off, they've identified a program that is related to mental health. And I believe that to be a big issue associated with, with police officers, that, that, uh, this goes on and on. The grant for law enforcement, mental health wellness, House of Member, has run out this year. It'll be January or February before it's made available again, so there's not much opportunity to do that. In the meantime, everybody saw on the news, we've had some issues this week. Um, that's hard on our police department, especially when they're strapped. And I think Chief wants to talk about that. Here, take a mic.
All right, um, I think I brought this up in a previous meeting, uh, in regards to the Law Enforcement Mental Health Wellness Act. Uh, this is, as I understand, it's not only gonna be for law enforcement, it's gonna be geared toward first responders. Uh, but what they're trying to do, i- it's, there's no more of this push it back down inside you, 'cause that ends up blowing up. Long and short, that's what happened. You just, uh, problems at home, problems with your, uh, your, your personal life, i- 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 it just, it's bad all around. Uh, Dennis Morcelli, who was a New Kensington police officer, a instructor for IUP, uh, currently, he is spearheading this, and he wanted to use a department as a, basically a sponsor. I showed interest in it, and, which he will eventually, he'll write the grant, will use Menesha Police sponsoring this, or however it may be. Uh, grant monies come in, grant monies go out. It's just be filtered through us, oh, you know, and again, that's probably a discussion with accounts or different, different accounts, it's like, 'cause it, it gets them a mess, especially with the grant fund, everything coming in, this, that, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that's where, uh, that is. Before, the grant's not open yet, and he doesn't anticipate the grant to be open until the beginning of the year. Uh, but, uh, I wanted to, uh, talk to Council in regards to it. If I have, or if we could have Council's support in this, I don't know if this has to be a resolution, or this has to be just, yeah, you're good, go. I just wanna bring the Council's attention. This is something that we would like to do.
As a sponsor, what, what would the sponsor be doing?
Just organizing it, just, like, like, it, it's just.
And that would be all funded through, through the grant?
All through the grant. Nothing coming out of, uh.
So you might be holding meetings, whether you're bringing in people from Genet or New Kensington, or anywhere else in this county?
In the county, and.
Does it go across county lines, or is it strictly west one?
I believe it, it, it'll be available to anyone, really, uh, in this area, as a first responder, uh.
Do you have any information about the grant, um?
There's some web pages.
There, there's a webpage, it said, uh.
I'm assuming they're gonna need something from the city, whether it's a resolution or a, a letter.
Yes. Yeah, so that's where, I, I'm kinda like, wanna stay with it. He reached out to me earlier this week to find out, you know, uh, what, what's going on with that. I said, I, you know, it's never been passed, but it's never been denied. I said, it, it's been talked about briefly. So this is where it leads, uh, us. I just wanted to see where Council stood on it. Again, it's not gonna cost, uh, City of Menesha anything. It's all gonna be grant-funded.
Does, do you, I would suggest you contact him and ask him what we, he needs from the city to be a sponsor.
Okay.
And then we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting and, and take it from there.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm all in support of it. I think it's a great opportunity.
Okey-dokey. Onto my next thing. It is the, uh, we need to hire officers. We're not officers. So, I asked, uh, Lieutenant Thompson, who does all our stats, all the, the fun stuff. I'm sure you probably saw some of this during the contract negotiations, 'cause he loves stats.
Mm-hmm.
So I have them all here, and I have facts and everything like that. So I'm gonna run through some things. Whenever I'm done with this, reading this off, I'll give this to Mike. He can copy it off for everyone. You can take a look at, it has UCR data, if you really wanna dive deep into it for the years. But, it's probably worth a gander. All right, so, the Menesha Police Department is currently understaffed related to calls and crime. So far, uh, year-to-date, we're over sixty-five hundred calls, projected to have seventy-seven hundred calls for twenty-twenty-five. Four hundred and two of them are serious high-risk incidents for the year. Uh, we currently only have ten deployable full-time officers with twenty-four-seven coverage. That does not include me. That's ten patrol officers covering the street. Uh, twelve-hour shifts to offer, a two-officer minimum, offer, uh, often reduced during transports. That's whenever we have to transport someone to jail because a sheriff's office is not available. Uh, three officers is the minimum necessity to stabilize staffing. There's a chart. I can't, I'm not gonna, can't really, you'll see that, chart. All right, call volume, the workload reality, sixty, over sixty-five hundred calls from January first to October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, projected annual seventy-eight hundred and some change. Average calls, twenty-one to twenty-two calls per day with a two-officer minimum staffing, ten to eleven calls per shift. Effectively, five to six calls per officer, twelve-hour shifts, before reports, investigations, follow-up information, arrests, hospital watches, and transports. Uh, eleven full-time officers, ten deployable, uh, three part-time officers, we do have, with inconsistent avail- availability. They have other full-time jobs, they come in whenever they can come in. Uh.
Have you looked at the cost of these part-time officers?
Yeah, they're, uh, currently our part-time officers, per contract, cannot work the road unless it's a vacation or a personal day. The part-time officers that do come in, they work the manor shifts. The manor shifts are the Hou- Housing Authority properties where their time is reimbursed from the Housing Authority. They do supplement us, along with patrolling the Housing Authority. They are available to assist on these, uh, more violent, more, uh, pressing calls throughout the shifts.
Okay.
Uh, so, the supervisory structure, we currently have a chief, one lieutenant, one sergeant. No debt for leave, training, or major incident. So if we have a major incident, we're, uh, uh, we're always been depending on other municipalities, like the other day. Uh, and it so happened that a couple hours later, a shift changed, so there was, we had more guys. Uh, we were lucky, luck for that fact, not 'cause of the incident, just 'cause we were able to get the other officers in whenever we were coming in for their shift. Uh, so the other ones who worked during the day had to stay over to assist. Um, our investigative capacity deficit. We don't have any in-house detectives, or especially investigative units. Uh, county detectives, uh, and, uh, the forensics teams, R and I, uh, provide support and do not handle day-to-day follow-ups. Patrol officers must struggle, must juggle, response, evidence collection, and follow-up investigations. A limited avail- availability to work serious offenses, child line investigations, fraud investigations, narcotic investigations, and specialized details. Result, lower clearance rates, repeat victimization, and a growing, uh, community frustration. Uh, hidden work- workload, not seeing any UCR numbers, which I have here. Police often respond to, respond first to serious medical calls due to EMS staffing delays. We've always ran serious medical calls. Uh, mental health crisis, crisis, uh, frequently requires two officers, that may result in extended hospital watches, and, uh, our mental health calls have been increasing. Uh, overdose calls require medical response, scene control, evidence handling, follow-up. No dedicated prisoner watch. One officer must remain with a restee at the station. We do have prisoner watch. Sometimes it's great, not a problem, they'll be there in ten, fifteen minutes. Other times, we have to pull an officer from the road to watch a prisoner. That's without, that leaves one officer handling calls. So, without paying overtime, full-time officer to come out to sit there and watch a prisoner, is what we have been doing. Uh, no dedicated transports. Officers must transport to county jail, leaving one officer to cover the city. A coverage collapse. A single call can empty the city. A single arrest can remove one officer from patrol for the entire shift due to prisoner watch requirements, transport, medical reasons, uh, domestic with weapons, mental health calls, other consume all, it can consume all, all, all-duty resources. During these events, there may be effectively no police coverage for the rest of the city. This is a public safety and liability emergency, not just an inconvenience. Uh, you know, we'll go back onto our structure. We have, uh, only three supervisors, little redundancy for critical incidents, training, policy enforcement, high-risk incidents, use of force, pursuit, mental health calls, then staffing increases fatigue, overtime, the risk of mistakes. Civil liability risk increase when staffing is inadequate for known workloads. Recommended, a recommended staffing increase, uh, the hiring of three additional full-time officers will improve the likelihood of having three officers on duty consistently instead of occasionally. Allows one officer remain in city, during transports, hospital watch, complex incidents, provide the foundation for a future detective or targeted enforcement roles, align staffing more closely with the reality of seventy-five hundred-plus calls and significant violent crime. Uh, the next steps for the city leadership is the approved, the hiring of three additional full-time officers, support, a recruitment and retention strategy, explore future creation, at least one detective or follow-up position, one staffing allowance, coordinate, uh, with county and EMS partners to reduce the availability of law enforcement bor- burden, commit an annual review of calls, crimes, staffing, to keep peace with reality. So, you know, I'm looking, I, I, uh, I'm looking to have, I have three candidates. Successful candidates, or very impressive candidates, on our civil service board, uh, currently. They just passed two already in the academy. One's a seasoned officer. Uh, I would like the city to employ, uh, to offer employment to all three. That's my recommendation. I, I, I need officers, point blank. Uh, the, uh, so, just review this real quick.
Historically, you've, uh, I've always understood that you've got thirteen officers, and the thirteen officers provided reasonable coverage of the city based upon the numbers that we compare when we compare ourselves to other regional, other police departments in the area, in the region.
Yeah.
The, uh, last, last, for about a year now, we've been suffering from attrition, people moving to other places, and you've been down considerably to about ten officers. The, that, I guess the question is, is that providing, is that presenting a significant impact to the well-being of the citizens? Not able to take care of the calls, um, the, the illicit activity that's going on? Is there, is there something that we can tie back to, to actual real numbers of why three, three more officers is gonna make a, make it better for the citizens?
Well, I have all the, the, the facts here.
Okay.
The, uh, just to give you a review, or just to give you a little, uh, I'm looking for it now, hold on a second, 'cause I actually have the, and usually, when Lieutenant Thompson performs these, he breaks it down to, like, comparison to officers. And I'm not saying we're trying to compare ourselves with the Joneses, but other departments have more and do a lot less than we do. My officers, and a- a- again, they're, it's the police department, a- a- and I know this. We are, we're all familiar with this. The police department's the biggest part of the budget. Line off, biggest part of the budget. But, when it comes to crime, it comes to safety, and it comes to enforcement, it's hard. But, when it comes to crime, it comes to safety, and it comes to enforcement, it's hard to do enforcement whenever you're dealing with type of reports, doing, uh, 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 runaround from call to call, call, it gets exhausting. Uh, I believe whenever I was hired full-time in two thousand and seven, I was the fourteenth officer. Um, times have changed. Now, we've had, we have a, uh, they said, I got three individuals who wanna come here. Uh, two academy kids and a seasoned officer who, uh, is very excited to hopefully start, you know, start over his career here. One of these, uh, charts here that I want to give you has the violent crime rate in local comparison. This is violent crime per one thousand, and in this chart, we are over eight hundred, the city of Madison. Chaleroi, just over two hundred. Claritin, about, uh, right here, around three hundred. Jeanette is under two hundred. The next one compared closest to us is Alakwep, and they're under six hundred. I don't understand it. I assume, because I know, if you look at New Kensington, New Kensington has more officers than we have. We do a lot more with a lot less, and we still strive every day. You know, and we're just trying to, to, with the contract to do this, uh, signed by the city, is very progressive, very progressive. It, 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 it brings a lot of fresh air into our lungs. We just need more people to help this job, to get this job done. That's where I come to the city council to consider the hiring of three, uh, officers.
Would you have any issue if we were to contact somebody like the D C E D and ask him to come in and do an analysis of what we have going on here? And the impact of three more officers and whether it would be, what it would gain us?
I, yeah, go ahead, because whenever, I believe, uh, John Mandarino was chief. Uh, and I couldn't find this. I had this somewhere, and I could not find it for the life of me. But there is a study, grassroots study. We are understaffed. And I think the recommendation of us was fourteen plus. Uh, that's my, what I can recall. I've been looking, trying to look for that study. I know I saw it last year in my file cabinet, and I could not find it. But, again, that was when Mandarino was chief, and that was in two thousand, maybe fifteen, sixteen-ish, I believe.
Sounds wrong, right? That's what I was on council.
Yeah, they did that.
It was understaffed.
Yeah, it was, the grassroots came in, and that's when they audited everything. They came in, every single department, they came in, and that's how, uh, well, simple things that we, we, we have now, uh, are, uh, that were repaired, like, go back where. Yeah, he, he also recommended we do, like, we get accreditation, we get all that, and that, I'm not trying to go down that road.
Well, the bottom line is, I'm first off, big supporter of the police.
Yeah.
Obviously. And I want to support you guys in any way I can, but by the same token, I would like to think that there is some sort of quantifiable improvement that the people, the citizens of Madison would experience by adding three officers to the, to the ranks. That are, something, something improves the, 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 the people. I mean.
Yeah.
That's a hard, hard thing to quantify, but we, we need to make sure that we're spending our money the, the proper way, too.
Yeah, I, I, I could.
I see it, but there's a lot of areas, especially the housing authority areas, where we have a lot, lot of lack of oversight over there, where there's tons of traffic going in and out of those places.
So, that, that's where I, um.
And I think that's really the, the crux of the, the issue right here, is people need to feel safe in their neighborhood. And if three officers will help us feel safer in our neighborhood, then it's money well spent, because that's what people pay us to, to do. That's the reason why they pay the taxes.
So, the intention is, here's the, here's my intention, if three officers would pass, is you have, obviously, you have myself as the chief. The lieutenant and sergeant will still stay on patrol. That will give three officers per shift with all vacations and time off. Three officers per shift to handle everything. That also will leave us one extra person, either A, to do investigative work, like light investiga-, like frauds, look into, stuff that the county can't help us. That, stuff that bogs down the patrol officers. That also frees up, that could free up an officer, alright, uh, officer so-and-so, you're the third man on today. You're on traffic. All you do is traffic enforcement. You know, that's another avenue. It's hard to do traffic en- enforcement when you're running to a barking dog, to a domestic, to a, a, a mental health call, to, uh, you know, gotta make sure Delmore's safe at fire scenes, to make sure he doesn't get beat up, you know, stuff like that, so.
We want to make sure Linda gets home at night, too.
Yeah, and make sure Linda gets home.
Exactly. We, we need to make you feel safe. That's what it boils down to.
Like, the other day, uh, the response time was, because Officer Zoslin was on, actually on the other side of the by-dock when that call came in the other day. So, he was there real quick by the time we get, we didn't even get information that someone was shot. We got the report of shots fired. We didn't even get the update yet, and he was there. So, unfortunate it happened again. When you look at, try to look at the positive things, he was right there.
Yeah.
Again, more officers, more presence, more everything. Uh, that's, that's my plea. Uh, again, I'm not the one that makes the decision. That's my plea. That's, you've got facts right there, I hope. Uh, again, I got, uh, I don't know if anyone, I don't think you guys met these, uh, these three. Uh, two of them, they said, they're in the academy, green, ready to go. The other guy, he works for Carlo University and wants to come work for the city of Madison. He is about a year or two older than me, so I think he's like forty-six, forty-seven, forty-seven, forty-eight years old. And he's twenty years' experience, wants to come here.
Well, the bottom line is, this is a work session. We can't vote on anything here tonight. I would like to ask council, what, what kind of additional information would you like to see before we get this presented later on in the month?
I see it all the time. I think we need the three. I see it all the time. There's so much overlap and gaps that we see in the city that without having those three, it's not gonna be fixed. And we're, like I said, we got the housing authority issues, where we got traffic going in and out.
I don't disagree with you.
A- a- and that's where, kinda like the, the, how.
Is there any quantifiable things that you'd like to see?
Whether we can afford it.
Yeah, and, and, I, 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 again, I know the need. You guys have the money. You know what I mean? And then that's, that's where, that's where our paths cross. So, there is, just like with the, the, you know, the city currently looking out for just equipment, police cars, plow trucks.
Right.
Which I got a call, a side note, I got a call from Shwerkes. They stopped down the other day. They might be able to, I'll give you the number for it. They might be able to do something with five-fifty or something along that lines. But, we were talking about police cars, and I brought them, bought the plow trucks, and he's like, oh, yeah, we do those, too. So, I don't know. But, back on topic here, just like the city looks out for LSA grants to help with the funding of equipment. We have to look outside for assistance from the attorney general's office for drug stuff, the state police for drug stuff. You know, we have the opportunity to get in those, but, you know, it, it, like, every little piece helps, like, um, and every department has it. And I'm sure every, every chief could go to every single council and say, I need more officers. We all do. Uh, that's, again, th- those are, uh, facts that I gave the mic. You could copy them or scan them and just send them to.
Okay, and we, and I'll ask him to do that. I guess the bottom line is, I should say, we can't vote on anything tonight.
No.
So, the next thing we're gonna talk about is the budget, and that really where this is gonna.
Exactly. That's why I wanted to bring my two cents into it. Again, I think we need more cops. We need more guys on the street department. We need more people in these offices. It comes on the money. It comes on the budget, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. But, um, yeah, that's, seeing what we can do, seeing how we can, how we could do this the best we can.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you, chief.
Oh, I just wanna add this, because that was one officer that went to the county. We said if they were still two, see, that officer's wife.
Well, it all boils down to money, and that's what the next thing is, is we really, and it's no fault of anybody here, but the budget has been difficult to put together this year because we've not had a city clerk for the last few weeks. And now that we have one again, we're now, just now, starting to get numbers together. And all I'm asking is that our director of accounts and finance allow us to help put together the budget. The, the budget is, is a critical part of the way the city operates. It determines where we got money for the police. It determines where we got money. It doesn't fabricate money out of thin air. There's no doubt about that. But, maybe if we understand what the budget, the, the budget consists of, we'll be in a better position to make it work, too.
Are you looking for my comments?
I am. You're the one that's got the budget. Are you willing to help, allow us to help you prepare the budget?
Well, every department should look and see what's allocated that we can afford to do and work within the framework of that.
Okay.
That's one thing. Two, and we are gonna have to do it next year, and I know this is gonna be painful, and it's gonna be a little bit different than what the chief was just talking about. A budget is a budget, and you have framework, but you also need to know what your budget allocations are ongoing on a continual basis.
Absolutely.
And I've asked Linda that what I want done for the first of the year is every month, each director gets a breakdown of how much they've spent. And one thing that's not gonna be pretty, and I'm gonna tell all of you this, is as we get closer and the time goes on and you're spending money, if you spend money and you spent a lot of your money and you have a little bit left at the end of the year, and you don't have enough to cover, in reality, it should be almost, oh, well.
And I don't disagree with that, but we have to have a budget that everybody's bought into and understands and, and is committed to making work.
Again, a budget, it can only be a framework, and it's only as good as how you enforce the numbers that are there.
I know for the last three or four years, this is my entire administration, that we've treated the budget as just a piece of paper. We presented the budget, and it just goes away. At the end of the year, we do a new budget. Nobody ever paid attention to, I, my, I've spent too much money in the police department. I've spent too much money in the parks. Nobody's never looked at that, because.
I've looked at it every year, and trust me, I scream about it every year.
But your budget last year was off by twenty-five percent. That is not a budget that we can subscribe to. If we have a budget that we're all committed to, that we understand what it is, then I think that we can make it work.
It, it doesn't work that way.
It's got to work that way.
Well, guess what? In reality, it doesn't work that way.
In reality, of every business I've ever worked in, we did that.
Well, forget every business you ever worked in. It doesn't work in reality, because every business, you could always generate other income.
You, but you had a fix.
Other sales and anything else. Here, we're fixed with what we get in.
And that's what you were fixed with departments and the companies I worked in.
Well, if you want me to do that, some, some of the departments would be, uh, really hurting right now. Because I'll tell you right now, I'm not gonna push anything up, but I agree with the chief that he wants, needs three officers.
Right.
As of the end of October, he's over a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars over budget.
Okay.
So, if going by your scenario, he gets shut down right now, because guess what? We don't have a penny to pay him.
Well, what I'm saying is that we've got more money in the overall budget by a substantial amount, and that is what the problem.
Down the route with the, with the, uh.
The budget is no good this year. The budget is no good for twenty-four, twenty-five. The budget was no good. I just flat don't agree with that budget at all. The budget was no good. It underestimated the income, and it underestimated the expenses, and we overspent the expenses, and we over, we got more money in than we thought we'd have. The budget was just no good. We need to come up with a budget that we can work with, that we understand, that we, we agree to.
Well.
And if you have that kind of a budget, you've taken into account what it's gonna take to get the police officer, three officers throughout the year. And maybe we cut out a number, the amount of something else we do somewhere else.
And this conversation should have happened when I've been screaming about in June.
Absolutely.
Happening a week before.
Absolutely.
No.
Absolutely.
Absolutely doesn't cut it. You're gonna sit there and say, this is, this is this, this is that, this is, this budget's no good, it's anything else. Well, I've been screaming since June, where's going on? Just like I'll sit here and scream at all you right now and go, who's going to look for, talk to somebody for a tan note? It should have happened already, and I've said it ten times, fifteen times over the course of a couple of months, and what happens? Not a damn thing.
Well, I've not heard that comment made at all. I'd be more than happy to go out and do that tomorrow.
I said about it a couple of weeks ago, two, a month or two ago, that we needed somebody to go look for, get a tan note. And no, but I don't, I'm not doing that.
As CFO, you should, that should be one of your duties, too, though, but I'm just saying. I would be more than happy to take that on as mayor. I've done it the last couple of years. I'll do it again.
Again, are you going to stick with what the framework is that everybody can look at? You can't be spending money the way some things are being spent.
As long as the budget is good, I think we can live with it.
I, I would have a hard time saying that.
That's because we've not had a good budget in a long time.
What's the percentage, or what's, I mean, when the chief's talking about three people, what's the percentage of we getting those two police cars? Because that makes a big difference, because if I don't, you don't have the budget for two police cars that you don't have money for, or the streets need a truck or something else. There's money that can be moved over and allocated. Okay, an officer's sixty thousand.
That's right.
Okay. That's two officers or a truck.
The budget needs to take.
It's a bull, it's a bull stock, so you're gonna pay out of one, and you're gonna pay out of another.
That's right. The budget needs to take those things into account, and, and it needs to be a reasonable budget.
But you're not answering my question.
I am.
What are you gonna decide on in saying it's this or it's that? Because you have to put that into the budget before you start.
Absolutely.
So, do you put in three officers, or do you put in a truck? Which one do you pick?
We have reasonable expectations of getting two police cars next year. Is that enough to satisfy, especially when we have three new officers? I don't know. We need to look into that.
I, I don't know what you're trying to get here.
All I'm asking for is that you share the budget and responsibility with us.
I don't want eight people.
He can look at what it takes to do the code enforcement. You can take, take that on as what you're doing. You can work with the parks department.
That stuff that should be done.
So, give it to us and let us do it.
I don't have it. Where do you think I have it?
I, if you have.
No, I don't have it.
I'll make sure, I'll make sure that Karen circulates all the information there, all, all of us, and.
Let me say it to you one more time. I don't have anything. I just got a preliminary first time ever looked at Sunday.
Then give it to us.
It was wrong.
Just give it to us, and we'll help you correct it.
The allocation for the garbage was wrong. It was, it was, it was two hundred thousand dollars off, and then they had to make an adjustment on.
And I'm sure that as this continues, we'll all find differences in the, the parks, the police, the, the, the public safety.
I've asked her to do that. Once we get something that's settled, that we have looked at, and I just got something this morning, this morning.
All I'm saying is, you don't have to put it all on your back. You can share it with.
I don't plan on doing that. I plan on telling everybody, here's the, here's an amount that we figure can work. Can this work for you?
Yeah, let everybody look at their budget, what we got right now today, and we'll work that out, and we'll work out what those budget amounts are, together.
That's not a problem. It never was a problem, from the beginning.
Then we're done. That, that, we solved that problem. We'll share that information. Linda will share it with us.
That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you. Let's pay some bills.
Why? Motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of thirty-three thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aight.
Councilman Witzikowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moog?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the rec account in the amount of four hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aight.
Aye.
Councilman Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the line usage fund in the amount of ten thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the parks fund in the amount of one thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoice from the liquid fuels fund in the amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoice, oh, I did that one. Motion to approve the transfer of sixty-seven thousand, seventy-two dollars and ninety-one cents from the general fund to the payroll account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Following is account balances as of today. Debt service is nine hundred and forty-one thousand, thirty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. Fire escrow is ninety-five thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars and nine cents. General fund is three hundred and sixty-five thousand, twenty dollars and fifty-six cents. Grant fund is a hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Healthcare fund is three thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Line usage is seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Liquid fuels is ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and four cents. Parks fund, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and three cents. Payroll fund is twenty-seven thousand, twenty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. The rec fund has one thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. The refuse fund has a hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. And the paving escrow has one hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and eleven cents. That's my financial report.
Thank you. You also asked that we discuss the bellwether purchase order system?
Well, this needs clarified.
Okay.
And that is how it's being used and how it's being done. And I'm baffled by that it's been in use for two years almost, and we still don't get it right.
What are your perceived problems?
What's that?
What are the problems you perceive?
Well, there's right now, there's a couple POs requisitions that are sitting out there, okay? And I've not approved a couple of them, because I've asked for clarification on what they are, and I sent that out as an email a couple of weeks ago. I got no responses.
Asking you. What, what, what are you referring to?
No, I asked them once.
Well, I'm sorry, but if you don't get a response, you just don't walk away from it either.
Well, I did.
Yeah, obviously. What, what were your problems? It just adds a point of interest.
Well, there's some things there for work that was done in the library. There's also things that were done at the civic center. So I called Karen, and Karen and I had a talk, and I asked her about, you know, does she know what's going on here, is this okay, before I approve this, and she told me she didn't even know what it was about. So my question is, is how are things getting approved and put in if the department heads don't even know what's going on?
Well, that's the reason why we have the department heads to approve them. Who, who approved it before you?
Okay, I'll, I'll let you speak for yourself.
Well, the one question was about that Tudy library situation that was brought up back in July.
The electrical, right?
The electrical with Tudy for the conference room, and I approved it in July. And then, um, Dave kept asking, like, what's the status of this? And then you send him the purchase order. The misunderstanding was Dave didn't realize that he should have made that contact with Tudy. He thought somebody here was gonna do it, so he has been doing nothing. But when it was clarified to him, he called Tudy and he sent that PO to Tudy, and he told me today that it'll be four to six weeks before the parks come in to fix the problem. And I thought, how do we track these projects?
Mm-hmm.
Who tracks them? Who makes the contact with the vendor? And I'm sure I still don't really know who should do it, and we should track it, and then at the end of the project, I think somebody from the city should go and look at that project and make sure it was done satisfactory, because if you don't, and then months from now, there's a problem. The other one was some things dealing with the civic center that I don't even know what they are, you know, until I saw that there's a, uh, requisition for some transistors, or, I mean, I don't have no clue.
Something for heaters.
Yeah, I didn't know anything about it.
thermostat, putting heaters for over four hundred dollars.
Yes, I didn't-
Can I ask who did that?
Godla.
That, that was a quote, that was a quote for one. Did they actually do the, the work yet?
I, I just know that there was a quote put in.
There was a quote put in to fix that, and, and that's what that was, was a quote.
Those were for heat for the gym, and they needed replaced. Last year, we weathered and went through the cycle, but they need to be done now to provide heat for the gymnasium.
It hasn't been done to the best of my knowledge. Those were quotes.
I know he gave quotes for the actual, but I, I don't believe he has either, Mayor, done the work.
But see, that's where the problem is.
That's, it was specified as a quote.
No, that's not what I'm referring to. What I'm referring to is if I have a question about a PO, and I go to the department head, which is this one, Karen, because she has the buildings, okay, and ask her, oh, I see you approved this, you, okay, what is this for? And she doesn't have a clue of what it is, we've got a problem.
Yeah, you just need to make sure you understand what it is that they're asking of you, just call in-
But nobody told her what it was even then.
I mean, I'd be told as we go along, you know, I'm here two days a week.
Right.
And I'm five minutes away, I can always go to the, and, and look at it.
So who, who entered that requisition in? Joy?
I don't recall.
I know I didn't do it.
I mean, I didn't do it.
And I think it has to be Joy, so the bottom line is, before you approve it, pick up the phone and call whoever it is that, that it came from, and say, what's, what is this? I need to understand it.
And I can do that.
I think that's, is that what you're asking?
What I'm saying is, if you want stuff done, that's not the problem. The problem is, is nobody knows things when things get done.
If there is a need for a project.
The people that make the requisition should be the people that are responsible for making sure it gets done. In other words, I've got a requisition in for elevator at the library, because I happen to be at the library today. I put a requisition again in for that. It goes to, to, to you. You would then say, okay, why, why, why do you need a requisition for an elevator? Why is it a problem there? And you say, oh, it's got this going on, or it's got that going on, and you say, can we do something else with it? Or yes, okay, I agree with that, I hit the accept button, and it goes to you. Now, you have questions on it, it should just go backwards the same way, to you, back to, to me.
And it does, because we have phone calls and we talk.
That's right. But the bottom line is, the person that makes the requisition should be the person that's held responsible for making sure that the project is done.
The person that should be making the requisition should be the department head, because they're the one that controls the budget. Because if they don't do that, they'll have no clue of knowing how much money's being spent out of their budget for things that they don't know anything about.
But they don't know whether there's a problem unless the people underneath them tell them there's a problem.
Well, there you go.
There you go.
That has to happen, too.
That's right. So we're all seeing the same thing. I don't see the problem.
But it's not getting done, and we've had the same conversation-
No, what's not getting done is-
No. It's not getting done.
If a requisition was put in, why wouldn't the department head say, well, what is this? I think that's your responsibility as a councilperson to say, what, what is?
That's what I was asking, but whenever I asked, Karen didn't have a clue what it was about.
Did she ask? It went to Joy, if it went to Joy, and now it's in a requisition, so now-
So there, there's the question.
The first person that, that approves it-
So what, who went to Joy to say, this needs done? Can you get somebody to look at it? Who did that? Because Joy just didn't get out here and go to the civic center and say, oh, this needs a heater coil or something.
Well, somebody, somebody got a, 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 a quote in from Godla.
But how did Godla know to go there to get it? You're missing, you're skirting around everything. I wanna know-
So Linda, Linda says that we have a problem with our heater. She's the one that we have out there. Linda Carter says we have a problem with the heater. We call in Godla, hey, go out there and take a look.
Who calls in Godla?
We do. My, Mike, it doesn't matter. She does. I don't care.
No, it does matter.
Why does it matter? Because it's all is a quote.
Because the director doesn't know what's going on.
All it is is a quote. All it is a quote. Now, you, now I get a quote because I'm out, Linda, I'm Linda Carter, I get a quote. She calls Joy up and says, put it in the system. The first thing that happens is she gets triggered that because that, that, that you're the first person that approves it. You need to then say, okay, what is this?
What is this?
What is this? Call and find out what it is.
But this quote from Godla that's out there, and I'm not just using this as an example, this quote has been out there since September. His bill was in September.
It's not a bill, it is a quote.
Quote, it's a requisition. It starts the process of you as councilpeople approving.
So Linda, Linda needs a heater? You, you now know what the problem is? You talked to, to Linda?
Maybe she could have emailed me and said we're having a problem. I mean, I would have, I always appreciate-
Maybe, but, but there's a paperwork problem that-
There's no communication, there's a complete breakdown.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, that's why I'm holding up a lot of these purchases, because I'm not getting any information.
You, you need to be able to feel assured that the person, the department head approved this before I got it.
And I do not feel assured, because now talking to the department heads, they don't know anything about some of these purchases.
You wanna go toward communication. I mean-
Well, that's not the point. The point, the point is that-
What, what?
You don't talk to me, Tony.
I'm not, well, I'm talking to you, I'm talking to the department head.
Back off, back off, back off. Let's keep this.
Communication.
No, you want a budget that you wanna turn around and stand on, and every, hold everybody accountable for, but stupid stuff goes through, they don't even, nobody knows what's going on. You can't have it both ways.
Nobody's asking for it both ways.
No.
No, I think you are.
Nobody's asking for it both ways.
I say, I think going forward, there's issues with the, uh, the properties, buildings.
You, 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 you get something from, uh-
I got something once from Joy. Remember, I called Joy up before, I was like, why am I getting something out?
Well, you, you need, you need to-
Nothing to do with my department. So, but what I'm going for, Mayor, real fast, if I'm saying is, if something's coming up with the properties that we have, I think Cosner should be informed of what's going on before even anything goes into the system.
Absolutely.
I completely, and I understand, but I think, I think she needs to be more looped in on the information.
And I am here two days a week. I'm here two days a week.
She should know everything that's happening in her department at any time, especially since she's down here, and apparently that's not the case.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Exactly right.
And the PO system should tell her, hey, we got something going on here. There was reported for Joy.
Before it gets to that point, it would, it would be nice to know.
I don't think- Maybe, but that's your relationship with Linda, that's your relationship with Rodney, that's your relationship with people in your department.
I, I always ask, please let me know, what more can I do?
That's right.
If they have, they'll check that, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm checking up.
And talk to Joy, and say, Joy, don't ever do this again without talking to me first.
No.
We'll check.
Problems.
Okay. Enough said?
Yeah.
Next one's for Lois Thomas. And by the way, I ran into Lois at the grocery store today, and she, she's had a rough time of it, but she's looking marvelously well. She's, she's getting, getting out, going around town. She's starting to feel much better. Hopefully that she'll be back in occupying the seat here in the not-too-distant future. She's, she's doing much better. Does anybody have her, her report, or that's something that we'll wait to?
No.
Okay. Uh, John, do you have anything you wanna report before we?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of council, administrative staff, citizens, and I'll go ahead, defer my, uh, reports till the next meeting on the twenty-fourth, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Yes, it's Monday before Thanksgiving.
Monday, oh, wow, okay, wow.
The Monday before Thanksgiving.
Get my A then. Well, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I also would like to thank, uh, the Madison Police Department, Shawery Police Department, Ross Straire Police Department, Northville Vernon, uh, Westmore County Police Department, PA State Police, uh, Stations One and Two for the Fire Department, uh, Peidage Auto, the Streets Department and EMS for the incident that occurred over the week. Uh, I think, uh, it was a very sad event. I don't know what we can do now to, to, uh, curb that from happening, but maybe adding three more officers might help that.
I agree with that wholeheartedly.
Uh, I also wanted to see what the update is on the garage at the Station One. Has it been fixed?
Yes, it has been fixed.
Uh, how about the repairs so far on, uh, Station Two Fire Department?
We're waiting on CDBG grant money. That's gonna be a while.
Okay.
That's twenty-five money that we put that in.
All right. Um, so far, it's been a long meeting, so I, I don't know what else I have on my plate that I can think of, but I'll yield the floor, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
Oh, the bathroom?
Yes.
How's the bathroom?
I do know about that.
Yeah.
I know that they put in the laundry tub.
Okay.
And I asked Delmar, it's, the bathroom's still not finished, the shower's not finished, the washing machine hasn't been moved.
Why hasn't that opened up?
I don't know.
There's a perfect example.
Um, I would, I would imagine maybe the vendors part, this is a busy time of the year with them, for furnaces and everything. Like, I forgot all about that, but that could add into it, or maybe he juggled different jobs and we're not number one list, I don't know.
Who are we contracted with to do that?
DSAC?
Mm-hmm.
Someone like make a phone call to him and ask him what's going on, because this guy beat it months ago? Did we have a contract with him or anything?
Yes.
Does it have a stated date and time for completion of project?
I don't know about that. All I ever saw was his, um, ass, how much it cost. I don't, I don't recall seeing a contract, so I don't know that. I didn't see it.
Did he started the work and he hasn't been finished, or?
He, he moved, he put in the laundry tub, lay that little sink-
And what was, what was next after?
Fixed the shower, make it operational, and then next to the shower, to the left of it, was the washing machine. That would have to come out there, I think, before the guys get into the shower. Is that correct? I don't know how you manage that.
You know, the shower became storage area.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Will, will you let me know when it's finally finished? Because every time I drive by, I wonder, is it finished? Thanks.
Okay, we can talk, too. Too ready to do it, okay. Thank you.
All right. Now I'll yield the floor, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Karen?
Okay, um, regarding the tennis courts up on Willow, um, I look back in the minutes to January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, and it's too bad Don Gregor left, because it's, he could have made this presentation. It looks like at the time, somebody had contacted a couple of companies and had given you options and everything else. And so far, this is as far as it has gotten, but people continually tell me they'd like to see something happen with the tennis courts. And I don't know if any of you driven by them lately, but, um, one of my sort of neighbors, Matt Morack, said neighbors have complained, they'd really liked that area cleaned up, so this past Saturday, he and his dad Paul went up there and cleaned all the, the grass and weeds and stuff off of it. Our guys are gonna spray it, because they wanted it to look nice. What remains is to fix the fence, because it's off of it and everything, so I don't know. Um, I think we're back to square one with these prices and options and everything, because that was, that was, um, well, pickleball's a whole different ballgame, because of the decibel level of those balls and everything. And those neighbors are right across the street. Well, that is a possibility, but that's a different project. Right. Well, again, two pots of money, and these, these, um, at the time, you're looking thirty thousand, sixty thousand, uh, a lot of money for this, so the, the question is, and people, people want it, but where are we gonna get the money? Well, I'm willing to work on grants.
Karen?
Yes.
Nothing much, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
When I was Parks, I worked on this and got Dix involved, to bring it. And then I was done with it, and Mr. Gregor took it from there. I don't know if he spoke to them or not.
I don't know, and-
But Dix was a very good viable place that they do a lot of that.
I go on their website occasionally, and they have windows of one you can apply. And it seems like for the past year, those windows have been closed. The McKeesport got a lot of money for Dix. Remember, it was in the paper months ago, and I thought that'd be an option. But if anybody has worked on this, what I would appreciate is a file folder saying, here are the contacts, call them.
Well, the corporate center, I think one of the corporate centers is in Smithville.
For?
Dix.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and I do-
I mean, they're always doing that. Uh, the other place we looked into and we didn't get a chance to, they, we got back to them was The Penguin. Even though that's not hockey.
Well, at least work has been done, and, and I don't know where the paperwork is of it, um-
You may have to re-initiate that from beginning.
To get somebody to go in there and, and say, is it worth restoring this tennis court? Well, there's a, a lot of places you can go to, but this is a big project.
Yeah.
And it seems like it's been dragging on for quite a few years. And it seems like it's been dragging on for quite a few years. I'm willing to work on it, but I need help. Well, but again, it takes somebody to sit down and you have to have a project before you can ask for the money for it. I'm learning that.
You did an outstanding job on the music in the park, I.
Well.
I think you.
That was a little one, but this is huge.
Well.
But again, I'm willing, I'm willing to work on it. And I think I, Matt and his dad did a great job and I wanted to thank them. And they, while they were working, people stopped and complimented them on the job that they did. It looked much better. So, again, I don't know where we go with this. I think somebody needs to go in there and again, give us other, um.
I'd say contact Dix.
But I mean, as far as the price and what needs to be done.
Well, call, give Dix a call and see what they can do for you.
Do you think that, have somebody come in and give us an estimate on the cost?
No, what Dix is doing is they have.
They'll come in with money.
We need to know the cost first.
They give you grants.
They do, but we need to know the cost first and options, just like we did all those years ago and start over again with this.
Yeah.
I don't know, so.
Well, that's a portion that the USDA wants to help with, is to give you the idea of cost.
If you got some, some people that use that tennis court that may be able to help you.
I have a whole list of them, but first we need to know.
Then, see, see if they can help you get together some costs or some, some goals.
Yeah, well. Um, it has on here where it's, again, on Saturday at nine o'clock, meeting at Madison Park to plant some more trees. I know, I know. I said, oh, Linda's gonna love this. But we did get a grant again and, um, I think, if I'm not mistaken, seven trees at Madison, two in City Park walking tree area, and then one up above. It was a memorial tree. So if anybody wants to come and help us dig holes and fill them in on Saturday at nine, that would be great.
Okay.
And, um, a discussion on the, um, benches and memorial items, it came to my attention that somebody actually planted a tree at Madison Park without our permission. And there was a bench there that was not planted, but placed there without our permission. About a year and a half ago, I went through all the parks and I put together a survey of how many benches there are, what condition they were in, if they were memorial benches. And when I did this, that bench was not on there. And lo and behold, there is now a tree planted in Madison Park. Yeah, I know who it's dedicated to. I know, but we need a bench policy, which months and months ago, I had sent out to everybody, at least to have a policy so we can have a plan that we don't need any more benches. We maybe need some handicapped accessible picnic tables.
Can we, can we come up with something that enforces that?
So, I don't know. I just think I, I said everybody.
Enforces people placing.
Yeah. How do people have the di- diagnostic? You go to a public park and put a bench and a tree there?
They do.
I think you'll do if there's a pipe or something running already that's there.
There was no one called made? There was no coordination with, with what?
I mean, you have to know who did it.
We, that's pretty obvious. We know who did it.
Who did it.
I think they should.
We know who did it and who paid for it.
But we need a policy that in the future.
We need to have something that says you just simply don't do that without approval.
For benches?
Yeah.
Do we have a form? I've never seen it. Nobody, when I asked, do we have a form that people fell out to get a bench? I was just told no.
He's the one that did this one.
It, it's city property. I mean, you can't just allow people to.
Yeah. But they did.
They did.
So take it out.
No, they.
Take it out.
And now you've got, grass has been dug up and, and.
Take it out. Take it out, fill the grass in, put grassy down there and let the grass grow. You're done. The bench, get rid of it. Use it somewhere else.
Well.
It needs, you need to call, call them up and say, come pick it up and get it out of here. Why should we pay to get it out of here? He needs to get it out of there. And, and he can make a request to have it put in some park and we can decide where that goes and so forth.
Councilwoman Cosner, didn't you put together a?
I sure did.
A policy on?
I sure did, Mr. Del Fonsa, months and months ago. And it could be revised. It was just the starting point. So we have, so we know what, what goes, what goes into. I remember a few years ago, Dorothy Urbana, which came to council and she requested a bench to place in City Park for her husband Chuck. And I remember council voted on that. And it's, it's there, but we really don't need benches anyplace. We need other things. Playground equipment. We need some nice new picnic tables.
I don't think this needs an ordinance. I think.
Needs enforcement.
There's a full one.
City property. If you wanna give them a chance to go back through that process, sure. But again, it's city property and it's within your discretion to move it, remove it, have them remove it.
What's that, Delmar? Which we. The, I mean, we need those. I thought so. Right. Well, but maybe moving forward, can we put, use a form that somebody, if they want a bench or a table, come here and, and get permission for it and then you vote on it?
I think that's always been like that. In the past, they have to come down here and we vote on it.
But we don't have, we didn't have a form.
I, I think you created the process.
I did. Cause I got it, went online and just got it from someplace.
So, so, cir- circulate that through council. We'll vote on it next time and we'll make it official.
Okay.
Everybody's had a chance to look at it. I just don't have it in my possession anymore.
I'll send you another one.
Thank you.
And I wanted to remind everybody that next Thursday, November nineteenth, at four o'clock at the boat launch, there's gonna be a flag burning celebration. Not, not celebration, it's, I don't know what to call it, but it's an event. And to thank, I wanted to thank the veterans for putting all the flags, flags on the, um, the grays of the veterans and then removing them yesterday morning. So I wanted to thank them for that. And I think that's it. I don't know.
The only other thing I wanna do is make sure that everybody's well aware, our next council meeting will be on a Monday. It'll be Monday, the twenty-fourth. Um, and pre- preceding the Thanksgiving on the Thursday. So just put that on your calendars. Twenty-fourth, Monday, the council meeting here. With that, would somebody like to make a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.[1786.44]